I have the call to Island Lomester Planning Board for June 6, 2022, 6:30. And we've scheduled public hearing and open public meeting. Public hearing for deviation from approved subdivision plan. Southgate Business Park, map 503, parcel 3-dash-12, lot 10, Technology Drive. Do I have representative yet?
Yes, this is Tom Bavensi for the petitioner applicant, Southgate. And also here on behalf of Beverly Warilla, that we're going to, we're going to ask for an amendment to the petition to add her section of Technology Drive to the petition. So the entire section of Technology Drive would be eliminated and removed from subdivision. And I think she's filed a joint application last week, Elizabeth.
Well, in your, in front of you is a request that came from the Warillas. And then they have suggested language to put into the conditions. And there's a sheet that says, "Request for removal of Technology Drive from subdivision plan." They provided those two pieces of information.
So if you remember, at the initial meeting where we did the submittal.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, thank you. Bill Hannigan, Engineering. At the original meeting when we discussed, when we did during the submittal process, we talked about just doing the piece of Technology Drive over what is Southgate Business Park plan. And we said we didn't have really any control over what the people behind us were doing. They then approached Barry as part of their getting notified as the butter. They said, "You know, we wouldn't, we're not objecting to you just get rid of the whole thing." So that's the reason for the amendment to the petition to basically just limit the entire section of the roadway from Research Drive all the way to Willett Street on both parcels. And that would basically just put all the land back into, the Warilla land would become one piece of land and the Southgate land would become one piece of land. Kasimi land would become one piece of land.
Yes, sir.
You just killed two birds with one stone.
Okay, and will that take, and so that eliminates any access to Willett Street?
Correct. Yes. So currently it's a paper street, it's unconstructed. And Technology Drive runs from Research Drive, which is an approved roadway in Lomester, out to Willett. And so now both landowners are joining in and requesting that each half of the Technology Drive, unconstructed, never built, be eliminated, removed from the subdivision.
Was that ever put in as a paper street? It showed on the subdivision plan.
Correct. It's an approved, is an approved way out of the subdivision control law. Research Drive is an accepted way by the city. So the approved way has never been constructed and there's no anticipation of it ever being constructed because of the fact that the, the last two pieces of land on Research Drive are being developed and their sole purpose is one more building on each lot. And there's no need to extend out from Barry's perspective. And the Warillas have no intention of rebuilding the road in from the other side. So they asked that they were allowed, be allowed to eliminate their section as well.
Okay, so that leaves their land that's still, they could come in for, delay the date?
They could, they decided to, they had to go back through the subdivision process to redo everything to, if they decide they want to develop that in any way, they'd have to, they'd have to start off all from scratch at that point in time. But they're, they're aware of that and they don't want the road on the land. I'm not exactly sure why.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have anything from, we have something from them, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's in front of you. It's two sheets. One, request to include all.
Yeah.
Request to include all Technology Drive removal and modification. It wasn't in your packet, it was in front of you when you sent it.
Oh, okay, okay.
These came in after the packets went out. One came in at like 3:50.
Okay.
This afternoon. Removal of Technology Drive from subdivision plan and the language.
No, you want it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so the second one, which is removal of Technology Drive, that's more.
Okay, good, yeah, okay.
It's more than the form of securement of a proposed vote pursuant to the modification provisions of section 81W of the subdivision control law. So that would make clear that Technology Drive is being removed from the entire subdivision in its entirety. The petition is of both owners, Beverly Warilla and Barry Kasimi's company.
Yeah, as long as we, I've got something from them.
Yes.
To that effect.
In fact, you.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't, they can do that and like you say, come back at a later date.
Correct, you can choose, yeah.
If they want to do something to that or reown it for something else. Do I have any other comments?
Just.
Yes, sir.
Spencer Holland from Myrick O'Connell, our firm represents Beverly Warilla. And just, just to clarify, an abundance of caution here, we just want to make sure that tonight, any action by the planning board would not leave the Warilla property still as part of the subdivision. Because I know the initial application just proposed the removal of Technology Drive. So we just want to make sure that, to the extent that the planning board is able to take any action in light of the, kind of the more recently submitted information with the Warillas, that that would include the removal of their property from the subdivision. They just want to make sure that they're not less than alert.
Right. And we have a draw and show that new.
We submitted a sketch, well, the subdivision plan is of record. And we submitted a sketch to remove of our portion of Technology Drive. So we agree that by doing this, that eliminates that piece of land being included as part of the subdivision.
Okay. I've seen them, I just wanted to make.
I think what you're asking, that land would be added just to.
Correct, yeah. So we, I think I covered that like in the second modification we were just in. So the entire Technology Drive will be removed. And then any other, the lands can be reconfigured, adapted, put into other relationships according to the subdivision control law. So either an 81X plan or a new A&R plan or a new subdivision plan.
That looks okay to me.
I'm looking at the assessor's map and I see Warilla properties with frontage on Willett Street.
Oh, well.
So even if they remove themselves from the subdivision, there's nothing particular in that problem, correct?
Coming in from Willett Street, that is correct. But that'd be a separate, that would be a separate subdivision plan and the traffic study and the whole package.
Right, so whether or not they remove themselves from this subdivision, they have.
They still have, they still have rights and they have frontage.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, does anyone else have any?
So I'm just reading this for the first time. What I'm not immediately seeing on here is the removal of the Warilla property from this, come to approved subdivision. So seeing Technology Drive being removed, Technology Drive, maybe re, anything that's in mind. We just, we want to make sure that anything that's acted on today would include removal of the Warilla property.
You guys can add it at number three on your own accord, that this, this, this motion, remove Warilla land from the subdivision, part of the, part of the motion.
But yeah, we just need to make sure that's, that it's done all together.
Being brought together.
Clear that, right.
Okay. I think we're okay there. Do I have anyone who wishes to speak on this behalf? Here or none? Do I have, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Did you want to go through all the department comments first?
Yeah.
Oh, board comments, I don't know if we had any. I said I.
Department.
Department.
Oh, department head, yeah, go ahead.
DPW Director approves. Fire Department says that they need more information. They want to know if eliminating the road compromise will, will compromise their access to the Continental Stone Building.
No, 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 that's a separate, there was a separate site plan.
Okay. The Building Inspector disapproves. He says he may be wrong, but he thought the subdivision expired 10 years ago.
Yeah, I just ignored that.
He said he may be wrong.
Assessing says they approve.
First, I'm going to say that.
Board of Health says he approves, there's no public health impact by the elimination of this section of road. And then I had a bunch of comments, but Bill probably wants to.
Do you have some more comments?
Well, I evaluated it as if it were a subdivision. And you want to take into account that there were two prior approvals. There's one on September 10, 2007. And then there's one, a modification on 2017. I don't know if you need to carry over all those conditions.
Those would, those would carry over on, this is just a modification. Those would, those should stand on their own.
Okay.
As modification against Southgate Park.
Right, correct. You know, at one point you were, you were talking about what waivers we would require for this. We would only need waivers if we're going to try to build the road. So therefore we wouldn't need any waivers because we're just continuing.
Yeah, taking it out because basically it's taking it out and it's just.
Yeah, going back, going back to baseline.
Going back to baseline. And anything they got to do would require a site plan. So we'd be covered on that.
And they come forward.
Okay. Do I have any other questions, any questions for the board?
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion made in second to close the hearing. Any discussion? Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Vote say no, motion carries. Call to all, please.
Dr. Carroll.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
Solomon County.
Yeah.
Territorial So.
Yeah.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan, excused. Jason Harden.
Here.
Dean Valiare, excused.
Okay, Ms. Previous meetings, any additions, deletions or corrections?
Make a motion to accept, Ms. Ed.
So we have a correction.
I'll do it.
If I could be listed as either Ms. or actually Carol Vittorioso instead of Mr., that would be helpful.
Sorry, I missed.
We're, we're reporting with Lady Carol.
No, I know.
This is the second time.
One time I was in, right? You said I was not.
You were not, you were present and excused.
I was present and excused at the same time.
Yeah.
Mr. Vittorioso.
Yeah, Mr. Vittorioso. So we get that, correct, right. I have a, have a correction. Do I have anything else on this?
You're correct.
No, I'm.
At least. Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries. Whole business done. New business, 5.1. Deviation from approved subdivision plan, Southgate Business Park, map 503, parcel 13-dash-12, lot 10, Technology Drive.
John.
I hope you don't have as much.
Skip over three. You skipped over.
Oh, sorry about that. I skipped the whole section. Plan submitted, 3.1, sorry about that. Then off of Central Street, map 317, parcel 13, 5B-dash-2, 5D-1, 5A-dash-1, 14, 5B-dash-3, 7A, 5A, 2, and F.
I hope that the board has as much fun with this as I did. But we've got Mr. Hannigan here to clarify. Any questions?
Peter, what are you doing for us?
For the record, Bill, he is. So if you remember correctly, a few years ago, we brought in a plan to create these various lots and parcels, et cetera, for financing purposes. We're now going to next level of doing that. So some of the, some of the final financing is being put in place on some of the lots. We now have added built information. So some of that, so I'll focus for now on these main two parcels of the Brooks Pond project. If you notice down in this here right here, there's a dash line right here and a dash line right in here. And what happened in there is that this building got built over the property line. So we had a wedge around that and we took the area back on this one. So that made it so that these two parcels still meet the density requirement. Okay, so we took, basically just swapped areas to make that transaction to make sure that the zoning bylaw was met with the density. Okay? The second thing that's happening is we're creating two new lots. We're creating lot eight and lot nine. In this area here and in this area here is eight and nine. And those lots are being slated for some additional independent living buildings that are going to be coming in under proposal with Peter at a later date. And so what we did was we submitted a letter that basically outlined the density requirements for all the remaining land on the backside of, on the Brooks Pond part of property to make sure that every single lot had proper upland area, okay, to meet the 5,000 square foot per unit in density. The last project that we did with the board was where we added in these garage units, okay? And then we had a series of garages in here and some of these units were being converted to garage. That concept hasn't really worked out as well as we had hoped. So that's, those units are being eliminated. So that's how you get some of the density back by eliminating, I think we eliminated 12 units? 12 of those? Yeah.
12 of the garage.
12 of the garage units and those. So that, that allowed us to make enough room to, to create these other two lots, lots eight and nine. Okay? So the density of the, the four main parcels are with the number 12 building, the number 13 building. And then you have the back part of the site in here and the front part of the site in here. Those are the four main Brooks Pond site of projects. So density is met with respect to the upland area, the lot area has, each one has frontage to make sure that they, they comply with the zoning. On the front side of the parcel, in the area of the two, the three buildings that are being built, on lot, what's shown is 7C2, you'll notice that the building is kind of parallel more so with the property line or the street line. And there was a section that was closer to the, to the lot line against lot, building on building number 12. So there's a small change of the lot line. I almost have to point it out to you, you wouldn't even notice it right there. That line right there is the line we're creating in this lot and that lot.
Oh, to make it.
Okay, amazing. So the building decides the zoning, that's just right here. That little sliver right there is being created, yes?
Okay.
So that make that, of course, that building in compliance with the setback requirements. There's no area of frontage requirement relative to the units up front. So that, take care of that. The other thing we did between lots 7B2 and 7C2 is we realigned the property line. The existing line is shown in dash and we're realigning that basically, what is right here? We're realigning that to be basically right down the center line of the driveways, just so that it's clear where we are on the lots. Once again, more for financing purposes than anything. And then on the other side of the street where the, where the L-shaped building was created at one of our last meetings, there was a property on in between that. This basically merges those two pieces and converts them into a single lot. Okay, which then allows obviously the financing of that to be completed past the construction phase where this is now one lot, so two.
This is one lot, yeah, okay.
So on the letter, we provided frontage and area for all the lots. And on the, on the Brooks Pond side, we provided the density requirements on all lots as well. So that, that should all be of record. And we asked that the board endorse the plan.
Okay. You should go into congressional redistricting.
I'm exhausted after all that.
Okay.
I tried to give you some advice, Mr. Bavensi.
Okay, so I know it's a little crazy, but let me explain it. For example, I'm going to go back in time a little bit. You see these lots here, this, you know, back, so when we developed this lot, this lot had frontage on the road. So the lots have to conform with zoning, but they have different lending institutions on each individual lot and not all the same. So their individual lot has to conform 100% with zoning and all the setbacks and all the other stuff. So it requires us to sort of make, so as you, as he was talking about the garages, it was successful in a way, but you know, we were working and we decided this would work out better. We had, there was a building proposed for what he calls as lot nine. There was a, there were buildings proposed down here. We're going to do them differently and we're going to have different lenders. Each lender, at the end, when we're all done, it's all going to merge and then one lender. But the people who do the end financing don't want to do the construction one. They have to get a smaller bank or whatever, work with them. And they get that done and you can roll it into the other thing. Eventually it'll just all be one lot. That's what the goal is. But in the interim, this is the only way I know how to do it. It doesn't change anything. It's not like, like somebody's going to be living here and somebody's in here and they have to screw a driveway. It's all, they're all common easements, access sewer pumping station, lighting, access to the swimming pool, all by easement. They're all sort of in a group thing. So it's like different way of doing it, but this is what I'm required to do in order to get the financing. It's just painful and I apologize.
No need. So what are you going to do with lot nine? Lot nine is standing empty?
No, no, it's going to be developed, but I'm going to come back later once I figure out that I have a lot. Then I'll come back with the whole plan.
That's both eight and nine.
And that's probably, you know, be next couple of months from now or something. But I first want to get a lot and I'll use the.
Okay.
But it'll all be totally, it'll all be totally by the book.
And I want to do.
Okay. I have a motion made and second to endorse the plan. Do I have any further comments or questions? Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote say no? Motion carries. Defend a subdivision for Pierce Street, map 575, parcel 1. Do you have a schedule list?
Yeah, we received a 13-lot subdivision with one lot of open space. And you might recall, you saw it's last July when they were doing like.
Yeah. Preliminary.
It wasn't preliminary.
No, it was just, it was subdivision.
It was just a sketch at that point. But we have, for advertising, the next thing that's going to work is July 18. We have something at 6:30 scheduled already. Marion Avenue is already Mr. Bucks.
Let's do 6:40 on the 18th.
That's my motion, second.
I have a motion made in second for July 18 at 6:40. Do I have any question addition? I have a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote say no? Motion carries. 4.1. The, it'd be an amendment to this to emphasize that we have a letter that removes the property owned by Barry Kasimi and Beverly Warla.
Warilla.
Warilla.
Do you need an amendment to that?
Yeah.
And that'd be an amendment to the, to motion to approve the subdivision through the deviation.
Do you want to adopt the language that they proposed in the amendment?
Are we removing Barry Kasimi's from the subdivision as well or just Beverly Warilla's?
Both of them.
Both of them.
No, no, just Warilla.
Just Warilla, just want to clarify that.
Barry's land should remain part of the subdivision.
So you wanted another statement added to that as well, right?
Yeah, and.
Oh, wait a minute.
An abundance of, about an abundance of caution in the way, to the extent that there is.
Yes, then he wants to.
They proposed action on their, the motion as drafted here, Beverly Warilla would oppose that because they do not want to be left as part of the subdivision, but without Technology Drive. So it's, we would either like to, you know, be a part of a modified application to the planning board that Beverly Warilla would sign off on, that would propose removing Warilla land as part of the subdivision or, or have some language that we could review and prove that would make it clear that we're removing all that land from the subdivision.
So I, so my question is, if you would, I think it's cleaner if you, if you're listed as number three on the removal of Technology Drive from the subdivision plan that will adopt, how, how, how would you like to proceed though? Do you want to add your own language or are you, do you think you need a?
I think we prefer a continuance so we can have the opportunity to actually craft something not on the fly here. There's also been discussion between, sorry, the attorney, Bavensi.
Yes.
And the attorney counsel of our firm about an easement between the two property owners. So.
I have a problem.
No, it's not a problem.
I can't take new information?
But it's not new information. It's not new information. He wants to be excluded from it. To me, I think it's semantics.
Okay.
So why can't we, why can't we, why can't we approve this with our own language that it doesn't include the Warilla property, but it's, but it's, but that the representative for, for Ms. Warilla will come back with the lang, with suitable, with the language, appropriate language on the removal of.
To be added in a later.
On the modification.
So I, I know the attorney just got this tonight because I just did it, but in number two, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read that. But I think number two effectuates what you would like because it says that Technology Drive is going to be removed from the entire subdivision. And then any, it may be reconfigured, any land may be reconfigured in whole or in part with any other land or lots that can be depicted on a plan that can be recorded through a treaty of deed. So that can be an 81X plan, another more gerland, could be an 81X plan. It could be in our plan, it could be a subdivision plan.
I don't think that's sufficient for our purposes though.
Right, so I'm just suggesting that plus with, you know, Madam.
Carol.
Carol. Not Mr.
And not.
So I, I mean, I think that should do it.
What's that?
As of many aspects.
Yes.
Yeah, try, try to get it done to that.
Well, well, it's not, he needs.
I think we need language that our client, our client can approve. The Warilla owns, you know, the property.
This action, this land owned by Beverly Warilla from the previous subdivision. That's exactly what it is. I mean, can be defined.
The action by the board. The action by the board.
This action.
This is land owned by Beverly Warilla from the previous subdivision. Or from the state subdivision.
Why don't we just continue it?
I have no problem with it anyway.
Why don't we just continue it, let it work out?
We're on that and you close the public hearing.
But this is, this, this is just a clarification. In the public hearing, we, we're saying that we would drive, that we, we accept that Warilla, okay? That we're just clarifying the, the language.
Is it possible we could just continue to the second call and maybe have a Dr. Counsel from Myrick O'Connell? Maybe we can come up with some language right now that would be satisfactory.
I could do that too.
Just for a few minutes and see if we can work.
All right, make a motion, move to 6.1 Communications.
Second. Motion made in second to move 6.1. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote say no? Motion carries. 6.1, 375, 307, 5,000 square foot warehouse proposed on Airport Road, Crawford Street in Lunenburg and Pittsburgh. Board to approve comment for Lunenburg and Pittsburgh. Lunenburg came to us as most towns do when they have a budding property in a large project for import. Pittsburgh did not. In, in the discussion for this, the mayor has expressed that we should do a traffic study where this would be affected. Because if you're familiar with this spot, is the entrance is right on Airport Road and just right near where they store all the buses in Benson Street. And it's a very short, looks like the traffic, it's either going to go on Benson Street onto 12 and then within 100 yards here in Lomester, down Airport Road and then.
Hamilton.
And everything runs into Hamilton Street and all of a sudden. So with the request of the, through the request of the mayor, Elizabeth went out and got three courts to do an independent traffic study and to what that impacted.
So this isn't, this isn't, the traffic study is being done by us, not by.
By the city of Pittsburgh.
By Pittsburgh or.
City of Lomester.
They're doing their own.
They're doing their own.
And the, and the mayor has asked that Lomester, we do our own to confirm theirs and to.
And who pays?
The Lomesters will have to pay for that.
Lomester, should we save the money for a lawsuit? For stop, for that, for that?
Well, that's, yes, Bill, I'll let you say the.
Okay, so Bill Hannigan, Hannigan Engineering, we're actually engineering firm on the project.
Right.
In Lunenburg, suspect for. So look, just some background, what we're doing is we're having the traffic study done. I think what would be, make more sense is to have your, whatever traffic company hire, have them do a peer review of that. Versus reinventing what we have.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, so.
The mayor, that's not what the mayor requested. The mayor understands that. You're doing a study for your client.
Whatever you guys want to do, we're saying that.
I know.
That, that, that's not.
The mayor understands that he wants one that's specific to Leominster. And he wants to evaluate not only the warehouses being proposed that you're working on, but also the, the Amazon, the store that's already been approved.
Because they're, they're pretty much all gonna run it together. In that same, same neighborhood.
What I think would be helpful to the city. And my client has already kind of felt like, like they're gonna have to do this. I think will be helpful, basically have a meeting with. The planner, member of planning board, the mayor and kind of just. Put our cards on the table and just talk about it. I think, I think there's, there's enough of a regional concern with this project. Okay, that, that, you know, they, they already, the fact that you're on the agenda, that I'm on the agenda twice in a, in a town that I've been working on the project. Tells me, tells me that there's enough of a concern that, that I think that that's warranted. Now, it, it may be semantics on what, what the mayor is asking for. But to go out and do your own study when you don't have all the baseline information of what the, of what the. It's gonna be a very expensive review that's not, it's, it's not gonna yield different information. Because of that, the baseline information that these traffic guys get. Okay, are all from basically the same sources of Mass Highway or, or just.
Did they study, did they study these three intersections though? Did they study? Hamilton and North Main, Hamilton and Crawford and Hamilton at Route thirteen? Did they do all those?
No.
That's what he spoke.
Okay, so. Same, same point, Bill.
We gather information from yours.
Right, I think, I think.
See, because it's not in Leominster, but it's the impact of Leominster.
I, I get that, and I think.
And I, what, what I'm not sure is. That, no, I was, you know, I was thinking about it earlier today. Is Montechuser Regional Planning should might, should be involved. Okay, especially where, you know, Lunenburg, Pittsburgh, you know, Leominster are all, all involved and.
And we're gonna drive right by it.
Yeah.
If we go out, if they go up Benson Street, they're gonna go to Route twelve down, down Route twelve through two. If they go out the other way. They're gonna cross Route thirteen to get to Route two that way. So either way. The impact is eventually gonna end up in the Leominster sector. I, I think, I think that's a very good point. I think maybe. Maybe the city should talk too much regional about having them review the study.
Yeah.
Okay, on behalf of the region versus spent, because it, it, these, these studies are not, not.
But we have, we have three quotes.
They range greatly.
Okay, let's forget the three quotes.
Ones.
Don't say who, just amounts, yeah.
I'll start with the top one. The most expensive one was thirty-six thousand dollars. Then we have one for twenty thousand dollars. And then we have one for.
Fourteen.
Fourteen thousand eight hundred.
And it's the one for fourteen we just reviewing, the three-year review.
The one for fourteen thousand eight hundred is the one dated June sixth. It just came at six, well, yeah. From Kimberly Horn.
But is the scope the same as the other two?
Yeah.
I gave them the same scope.
Same scope, but, all right.
Because the others.
The others.
Maybe. We should, we should. We'll approve that version of review. Same, I mean, for that side of the money. And this one doesn't really say what they'll do.
I mean, we really can't, we can't, we can't really approve this today. Because really, before we can approve it. Is, what we do is we make, this one, it's a recommendation to the mayor.
I do nothing for us to approve.
No, that's right. And always a discussion, we're, we're gonna, which side of the agency will manage it? Okay, but the, it has to go to the mayor. The mayor would have to take and put in a supplemental budget. We'll be sticking over it and then that. But like you said, if we could, in the meantime, we could be. Talking to Montechuser.
Yeah. Kimberly Horn is the, is the traffic engineer for Amazon. So that might not be.
They checked the conflict of interest.
Okay.
He checked on that and he says he's okay.
Kimberly Horn is Amazon's consultant.
They said that, yeah.
Oh. No, that's not gonna work.
Maybe Amazon.
Well, what, what I'm thinking is, I, I think part of it would be. Cause we're, we're, we've, we've already said that we're gonna provide the city with a copy of the traffic report when getting this done.
Yeah.
And that should be within the next couple of weeks. Okay, so once that's done, let us get that to you and start with that. Okay, now, if they don't cover the intersections that we're talking about. Then we can go back and talk to them about that, but. You know, I, I, I debate by, by the traffic. You know, what they do for traffic is they, they look at certain intersections within a certain distance of the project. Okay, so their report is probably. In line with what they're supposed to do professionally. But it may not be sufficient to answer questions that the city of Leominster has had. Okay, which may mean we need to expand our study. And if we, it, it, but it might be that there's enough information in the study, for example. Whatever we're sending back and forth on, on Airport Road when we tour through thirteen, is gonna tell us what's gonna happen at Route thirteen. It won't necessarily mean that we're evaluating you for Route thirteen, but the numbers will be inside the report of what we're doing. That'll allow us to then evaluate from thirteen. So it might be that we, it might be that we can supplement some of our. Our, and I'm, I'm speaking. Because my client knows that we're on the agenda. Okay, so I'm here for, for basically to kind of. Make sure that we realize that this is not something that they're not gonna listen to the city of Leominster on. They don't, they don't technically have to.
Right.
But I think that in the fairness of what they're trying to do in the region. If, if all of a sudden they, they decide they wanna build one of these Leominsters, they wanna, they wanna be able to show good faith. So that's where we're at with that stuff. So. When the, when the report's done, which I'm expecting it. Being done by Vanessa Associates, okay, they're a reputable firm in the state. So I, I think that if we can just wait. Whatever you make for a decision to the mayor. I think what it comes down to is that we're all, the planning board, I think, is, is on the agreement that this should be further evaluated. How, how do you guys get there? Is, I'm trying, I'm trying to provide an, an assistance to that regard.
Yeah, and, and you're right, as I look at it, maybe it should be just a peer review. Or we've gotta look at, you know, they didn't cover this and maybe it should be added to the requirement. Or like I said, they mentioned Montechuser Regional. And you should get involved.
Right.
And, and I, I think that's something that we can. We can continue. Because what kind of timeframe are they looking at on this thing? Where do you guys stand on this?
Our next meeting in Pittsburgh is till August.
Is in July?
Is until August.
Oh, August.
Yeah, they're not meeting in July.
Okay.
So we had a couple of things that we were working on, including the finishing of the traffic study, so. We pushed everything off to our August meeting.
So we've got time.
If you have, if you have the traffic study by the middle of June. You'll have time to get a review between then and the beginning of August.
Okay.
Then you can see the extent at which you need to have a review.
Well, why don't we take and then. Submit the three or give the, the three traffic studies to, to the mayor's office. Okay. And that we recommend. That the, the contact Montechuser Regional Planning. And that we should. Wait until we have.
Their study.
Their, their final study. Or their study before we make a decision. On what we want for a study.
Their study meeting, meeting the applicant.
Meeting your applicant.
Right, and I think that Montechuser should probably, I mean, they, it's a regional planning thing that they do, that they, it would make sense if the city asked them to review it.
Right.
It shouldn't cost the city any.
So.
May not.
That's right.
Well, that's, that's, you know, let's see, we don't know what they have there, that you can't.
They have, they have traffic engineers there.
Yeah, I know they have traffic engineers and they have people, so. And maybe, maybe they have the capability of doing the whole thing, you know. So I'm, I'm sure they, they do, so.
Well, we also have the one that they just did for the project that's happening now, which is the SIST. In narying those two reports together.
Right.
Actually, it's gonna be kind of interesting because you have both ends of Hamilton Street now. You know, one side being resolved as fast as it can, and now let's make sure the other side. Is, is, is a lot way for it to show us that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think the recommendation would be from the planning board, that there be furthers to the vans. Okay, and to make contact with the Montechuser Regional Planning. And to wait for the traffic study to be released.
To determine our lead.
Okay, when I reach out to Montech.
And I just determine our, a course of action.
When we reach out to Montechuser Regional Planning, what, what are we calling for them to do? What specifically?
Traffic, I would suggest to take the. Hospital corridor traffic study. The Route thirteen traffic study and the new one. And see if they can glean all the information we, we need from those.
Cause it's gonna work one half the time.
If they can do, I, I don't have to find what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, just saying, that's if they do a regional study and that, and regional rat.
You know, you're, you're, you know.
Yeah.
And mention what, what's causing this, you know.
Yeah.
The addition of warehouses in this area, we don't have the number of trips yet or the traffic analysis yet, but it will impact. Go through twelve and Route thirteen. And both of those corridors go through once, so. See what they can come back with and just how they can help us.
What services do they provide that, for the system?
Well, they have, they, they do.
They probably provide everything we need, but they sure gonna wait for the traffic, their traffic engineer to come back with the initial report to determine what we need. Or, or, or if.
Brad Harris is the main contractor with the traffic.
Yep.
Right?
Okay.
You got enough of that?
You wanna take that as a motion? So.
Yeah, it's part of the measure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think, you know, you, you don't stop at scratch unless you have to.
Yeah, no, I don't want to stop from scratch.
And then, and then, you know, by reading these and the disparities in the pricing. You know, it makes you wonder if, if one is just doing peer review and the other one is, is from scratch. You don't know. Well, they know, they're responding, so I know they're responding to a scope. But these are boilerplate proposal responses. As we, we all got so used to in our lifetime of work. Which does everything to be.
Okay. So I, I, I add a motion, all right?
Yep.
Do I have a second on that?
Yes.
All. Any further discussion? You're not, I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Katie Lane. Leeet Place Subdivision. Status update. Vote to determine.
So I'll refresh our memory back to January. There's a letter in your packet that kind of detailed, kind of overview. Where we stood in January with Mr. Xeris, if you recall. He had originally given a deadline of November first, twenty twenty-one to complete the improvements on Katie Lane. He came to us in January and requested an extension to June. June sixth, which is today. And he had a list of things he was supposed to do. It's in that memo. I went and did an inspection of Katie Lane. Nothing's commenced yet. Mr. Xeris has stated that he has plans. And you'll see an email due in June first, twenty twenty-two. That his plans to have the paving done on, it's scheduled with his contractors on June twenty-third. And then he has some more detailed memos that came in after your packets went out. One's undated. And it says Katie Lane says update. And he also says as part of that, he's attached to scope of work for grading his paving. And he wants, and as this is gonna be done, he wants to come back in August or July eighteenth. And. Talk about acceptance of the work and potential risk security.
Okay.
And yes, he also has another memo that just came in today. It's, it's dated today as well. About the legal work that he was supposed to do and that's underway.
Okay.
So it's up to the board's pleasure. So what you wanna do with this?
Well, I think we waited this long, waiting another, another month is not gonna make, make any difference, okay? And if he's gonna get the work done, but getting the letters, then he has put a few letters in, so. Looks like it's finally, finally gonna happen. So I'm willing to, I'd make a recommendation, we continue this to, to a July.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth meeting.
So who's the future motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to continue this for July eighteenth meeting. Any further discussion on that?
I do.
You're not, of course, the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. May I ask for one more communication before we move on to the director's report?
Okay.
We're working with Luca's Restaurant. On the, they built, and we just got the architectural plans that we're gonna have to go. And we're planning on submitting the, the plans by, hopefully by Friday, but I believe Monday is the deadline. And we're trying to get on the June twentieth meeting. And because it's a cycle plan review, so it's just a public meeting, not a public hearing. So we're asking if the planning board could put that on the agenda for the June twentieth meeting, because we're trying to get this rolling to the management structure. So the cycle plan is done by the end of the week, and we're just hoping to get on the next meeting, right, until July.
Twenty is a holiday.
Oh.
Well, this is.
We have a meeting, we have a meeting. We're on holiday.
Okay, so do we have anything scheduled?
I am on a federal holiday.
Um.
I thought it was a federal.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We have the public hearing that was continued for over for the lots.
But I'll be able to do.
Yeah.
And that's why.
But it's a federal holiday, it's a federal holiday.
It's a federal holiday.
I know, but it's not a Leominster holiday.
It's not a federal holiday.
Well, Leominster.
It is a federal holiday, it's a federal holiday, but it's not a Leominster holiday. So.
I don't, if we have a meeting on that day, we're sure gone.
Who are we going?
But I, 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 I'm, probably got people gone.
I'm calling New York.
Gone, gone, gone. To state employees. Yeah, state employees. I used to travel around older.
So what do we have scheduled for June?
Over for the lots.
Yep.
And we have that ready tomorrow.
Well, we have a subcommittee.
Almost, we have a subcommittee meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, and then we'll have it ready tomorrow.
But you should have enough if you want something special, if everybody else is here.
But you need, you need to.
License, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna.
Just tell me you're writing today.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we don't have six people, then we're not gonna do.
For what item?
It says anything.
The twenty, so why don't we? What about Tuesday if you want to?
I could use it for the twenty-first, if you wanna do that, I think I could do.
Back that day.
I should be back.
Yeah, so we get the roll for the twenty-first.
I have to check with the mayor first.
Can we use the twenty-first?
We get forty a few, yeah.
Yeah, I think it works.
Did we have?
That's a long time.
We didn't have to advertise.
No, no, it's continued.
It's continued, this is, no, we don't have.
It continues.
Continued, the chairman can re. Yeah, don't.
That's good.
Do you want me to check and see if the twenty-first is available?
Yep.
And then.
Well, even if it's available in a different room. Yep.
The library.[1722.34]
Libraries, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Why don't we go to the twenty first, though?
So do we need to make a motion to change the meeting to the twenty first?
Yeah, there's a good motions.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'm just thinking, Mr. Hattigan, you're, you want your meet, your item schedule's on the twenty? That means we have to do department reviews and everything.
Yes.
And give them, give them a tighter deadline.
This should, this is, um, pretty straightforward. There's no drainage and no, the utility is the same because of that, it's, it's, we're basically just tearing down the building completely.
Hey, we're improving.
We're improving our response.
Yeah.
Same thing, I'd like to see they finally get that squared away.
It's gonna be beautiful.
It's been a long road.
Great. It's a good restaurant, we can afford it on the bed.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, no, yeah, what, what motion, we need a motion to move.
The other motion would be, motion would be in order to move, move the meeting to Joe, uh, to June twenty first.
So motion.
Or second. Have a motion made in second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Motion carries.
Second motion.
Second motion would, uh, second motion would be to reschedule, um, our hearing.
The public hearing.
Of, of, of continuing public hearing on.
Over for lots.
Over for lots.
Twenty first.
The June twenty first.
So, so.
Motion made in second, um, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Motion carries. Third motion would be to schedule a little bit of a rest trip. Subdivision, subdivision.
Public information meeting.
Public information meeting.
Address.
Yeah.
My district.
We just filed with this.
Say something like this.
Yeah. You know, it's written.
All right, it's all good.
Okay. Motion made in second for a little bit of.
That was three?
Six thirty five.
Six thirty five?
Yeah.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Motion carries.
We gotta go back.
To cheer.
You go back. Okay, we're gonna be looking for continuance on five point one.
So, so, yeah, so continuing, yeah, we have, we continue.
Since next, you know, you guys.
Why don't we start?
Just table it. What, what date?
Vote on it? They're gonna come up with.
What date you wanna continue with, Joe? First of, you know, we'll do that. So that'd be the June twenty first.
Twenty first, yeah.
Okay.
Plenty of time, you guys got plenty of time, just through the voice, start shaking, let's get this.
So the, the public hearing is closed.
Right, so.
But it's gonna be under.
You just follow the definition.
Yeah, and file.
Definition. Definition.
Yep. No, 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 thank you.
Okay, motion would be in order to.
So continue.
Second.
Okay.
I'm not sure that's legal.
Okay, continue.
Continue.
Continue five point one.
We can continue with.
To two.
Well, we're not the whole thing.
That challenges.
No, just five point. We can continue with five point one, not the hearing.
Yep, right.
Okay. Okay.
Shouldn't have thought.
For clarification of document.
That's all, it's just for clarification of documents.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I, I still, I mean, I think we can vote on it in terms of the spirit of it, then it's like a, an agreement between the.
I know. But that was one, but you're not comfortable with that, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Motion.
Yeah.
She might just report.
All right, um, you have in front of you, I'm not without a sound. This morning, um, I covered, copied, um, the chairman, and you got it earlier this morning. And I copied the mayor. We, we're fortunate that our ordinance that we worked on for performance guarantee, guarantees passed. It's through the whole process, it's in effect. So now for site plans, we have a way to hold developers to it, with the performance guarantee. Um, but we need the cooperation of the building official. And so I sent this memo out in hopes that we'll get some cooperation, because, um, my, our, our department doesn't control certificate occupancy, the building department does.
So is, is there a problem with them doing it? Do we, is there gonna be a problem with them enforcing this, or is this just?
This is just something that we hope we have cooperation on, because.
Well, we can get cooperation, right? I mean, if, if they don't cooperate, we can make sure they cooperate, couldn't we?
Right. And what, what, let me, let me try to explain, okay? We're going back and forth on this. There were two things that we could have done. As, as the ordinance is written today, it says at the point, at the time of prior occupancy, okay, a bond, uh, should be determined for completion of work. Okay? In order that to happen, the building inspector or commissioner has to inform us.
So I can do an inspection?
He's preparing to give occupancy, okay? At that point, we have to, uh, we have to have a meeting, or we have to have some lead time to that, okay? And that was a compromise, okay, to do that. The alternative is that we change the ordinance in the future. And at the time of the site plan, we put a separate bond on the landscaping. Okay? That is not the way it's set up today, okay? Right now, we didn't wanna totally upset the Alphacat. So we're, we're asking for, for, uh, to work closely with the, the building department, that they give us some lead time. And, uh, just for instance, uh, we have, uh, a building over on, uh.
Working outside.
Yeah, I know, we have, we have a building, a number of buildings that have, they've got occupancies. And, uh, the site, the, the holes. The, 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 the fact that they have it is conditioned right now on one of them, where the trench is still there, totally wide open, and it's got to be eight to ten feet, because the sewer line is still exposed. Yet they have an occupancy and they're operating out of the building.
So this segues into the rest of my developer's report. There are three locations which I don't, I'm not gonna mention, that need site plan approval due to, um, activity on the property. And I've asked the building commissioner.
So we never knew about this, so they're.
I'm bringing the, the chairman's aware of this, because we've been working on it together.
No, no, I mean, at least three play, people that, what, three places that need a site plan approval, they were.
They need to be notified by the city that they need enforcement.
So they were just doing whatever they want, and nobody from the city ever stopped.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, this is nothing new.
No, no, I know, just for understanding.
Yeah, you're right.
So.
If you, if you remember over on Francis Street, Leeke came into us last year, a former addition to their building.
And they were gonna do all this stuff.
And they're gonna do all this stuff, no, we finally approved it.
Yeah, yeah.
But when we investigated it. No, when we investigated, we found that there was a detention pond thirty years ago. It was supposed to be built, and they were now planning to put an addition where the detention pond was supposed to be built, which was never built. Okay, so this is not a new problem, this has been a problem that's existed for years. It's one of those loopholes that we're trying to close. Okay, and we're trying to work with other departments within the city. Okay, and before, we did not have the opportunity to put a bond on the unfinished work. Now, with the notification with the building inspector, he can go forward with releasing, but we now, but we now have the authority, once we're notified, to come back and add a bond to their property to get it done.
But we have three sites that don't.
So there are three, three sites that are still active in the city that.
That we, that we know of.
That we know of.
That we found.
That we have to put.
That we, that never, never did a site plan for anything, they're just doing.
Exactly.
If I write, they will grab the permit, building permit, what did they, whatever.
Well, they got a building permit.
Yeah.
But then they said, but the building, but the building inspector looks at the building and the plumbing, electrical, and the safety, and you know, and the, they didn't look at the site plan.
Sure.
So we're now moving in the right.
Yeah, let's, let's.
So we're moving in the right.
I don't, too, that's just common sense to look at the frigging.
So.
What you're putting somewhere.
I know.
That's okay, I know.
Like I said, I just cited one that happened thirty years ago.
I understand.
I don't know if you want me to reach out to the three property owners that we have identified and add them to the agenda, and let them know they're gonna be on the agenda.
I'd like to do that.
Well, wait a minute, two, you have four, I don't know if you got one there? I don't, I don't.
Oh, no, the four that exist today, the three that exist today are granted, we can't do anyone. We only get new ones, so we can't go back to that.
There's three that need to come forward for site plan approval.
Right.
Because.
Not, they're not a work process.
No, I'm hoping maybe they'll do that, but.
These are already in process.
These are already built.
Once they.
Oh, well, then, they, this is past, this is past.
We can't call them in, because it's, that's all.
But they've done, they, some of them, it's been paving work that's been done with that site plan.
That's all.
For them, yeah, well, they do with them.
They, they were giving it to them.
That's right.
By right.
No, it's not quite right, it's not quite right. Well, they didn't follow the.
If you pay more than ten parking spaces, if you pay for more than ten parking spaces, you need some.
Supposed to figure the site.
And that, and that hasn't, hasn't been.
So why can't we bring them?
Well, we don't.
Say you can retro come in and try to, and try to.
Cause they can say, yeah, we didn't, it didn't say that. That's cause nobody said, you got over ten spots here, you need to file a site.
Can, can we invite them in to?
We're.
I don't, I don't, will they ever apply for financing? They won't get any financing.
No, that's right.
Well, and only if we notify them. What, what do we notify?
Let's start by notifying them and see if they respond.
So you have me, is that?
Is that our, but I'm wondering if it's, I, I mean, is that our responsibility?
I've asked the building.
I just call them.
I've asked the building, um, department to do something, and I've checked out, followed up every week or two to see if anything's been done, and I'm getting no response.
But that's, that's, I, I understand.
Verbally, I've done it verbally, I've done an email and.
Turned in writing.
I've done it in writing and verbally.
Just, just, keep.
Way more, you're gonna be there and say, hey, look, you know, I just need some help. That's kinda where I'm sitting.
Well, that's, we can do that.
Yeah, no, this, but, or you can't, you know, just.
And, and I don't, we don't, we mentioned.
How are you doing? I mean, I know we're gonna be careful here, but that, to me, is our, it's his responsibility to take care of, um, without having any new regulations.
Well, we've got the regulation now.
Yes.
But anything that happens in the future, like it's Lucas, he has a new subdivision, that will have that requirement in there. So we can, we can handle that. It's, it's the old ones, and, and then, and all we can do is, I could, I'd say we could.
We continue, can I just, I just wanna say, and, and it's not just this, it's other things we've been looking at, too. We continue to try to put more burden and more, uh, rules around things that have been existing for so long that we create these monstrosities, because now you've got eighty-five people grandfathered because they've been doing this for thirty-five years. Now you got this over here, this over here.
But, so, they're not grandfathered.
Oh, I'm not saying just, no, what we need, I'm just saying, maybe another body to do enforcement to be able to through the first ones and then go to the.
And that might be, that might be the, that might be the solution. But if we, but if we put enough pressure on it, then maybe, then you know, maybe.
We don't have enforcement.
Yeah, maybe that's good, maybe that's the answer, but that's not, that's not our answer, and that's our problem.
Right.
Okay?
They're.
In good faith, in good faith, we have a meeting, we have all these subdivisions, we have, you know, we look at all the, the drainage calculations and all this and that, and then they totally ignore all the site plans.
Right. Seems very.
I mean, totally, I mean, I mean, when I.
No, we've been saying that since we had the city council meeting, you know, what else can we use? We use another enforcement office.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what we can use, because this is not us, I, I, gee, guys, sorry.
But, no.
Thirty-five years.
No, I know they're short staffed right now because one of the clerks is out, that, this predates the.
But that, yeah, but that, bro, that's.
Yeah, it's all understandable, but, but, you know, it's gotta be a little bit of cooperation here, and, and people that, you know, are supposed to do the right thing.
So just thinking out loud, we're not an enforcement agency, it's, and it's not our job to enforce, you know, rules that were overlooked. Uh, and maybe building department is unwilling or unable, or, or isn't gonna go back retroactively. Is there another avenue? If you have an open trench with an exposed sewer line, is that a health, potential health hazard?
Like, it's some kind of liability.
And do we have any recourse with the board helping?
Well, you know, see, there's, Jason, that's, you know, just, that's.
For these reasons.
You, you issue an office in terms, and you got a test deal like that, right? It's just. Insatiable.
Yeah, very. But we're not an enforcement agency.
It's not us, you know? I mean, you know, the license commission or, 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 that they, they do the enforcement as well, that's part of their review, that's not us.
Yeah, but that's, that's for packing.
Moving forward, we're, we're talking about holding these bonds?
Move forward, but I think, again, I think, uh, while we.
There's a lot of discussion.
Well, one request of the building commissioner to come to our next, come to a meeting.
Yeah.
Just so we can have an idea how we can work together a little bit, and then what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to see.
Twenty first in November.
You have all sorts of other stuff, too.